Greetings, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November 18th, 2024 Board of Selectmen Highway Commissioners Cemetery Commissioners Meeting. Note that this meeting is being recorded. First order of business, Pledge of Leaders, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First up for tonight, number two, approval of minutes from November 4th, 2024. What is the board's pleasure?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Landry. Any questions, comments, or changes? Hearing none, all in favor state aye.
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 Unanimous. Next up, we have an appointment to the Finance Appropriation Advisory Committee with a term to expire at 6:30, 2027. Brian Clark is Brian present. Would you like to come up, sir, and tell us a little, either podium or the table, wherever you're more comfortable? Tell us a little bit about yourself, and first off, thank you for coming forward to volunteer.
Yeah, so I moved to Dudley in 2010. Work as a software engineering manager and a product manager during the day, personal trainer in the mornings. Just I felt it was time to try to help out the town because obviously I'd seen the ad a couple of times, so it looked like you definitely could use a little help.
We definitely can. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Clark?
Just thank you.
Yeah, just to be clear, I'm out. I could have been in a market, I could have been an accounting major. I went marketing, so I will not be analyzing.
I want to go on, and let me say you made a right choice.
Yeah, no, not at all. That's legit. What interested you about FAA specifically?
Just the extra foresight, you know, to be able to have that extra line of discussion and hopefully a little bit of pushback. You know, the people in the town are, tend to be fiscally conservative. So being able to question some of the things on there before it gets to the big vote, I think would be useful.
Perfect.
Thank you. Mr. Landry.
And where do you come from, Mr. Clark?
I grew up in Salem, New Hampshire, spent 15 years in Haverhill, and then moved here in 2010.
What drew you to Dudley?
My wife.
Oh, good answer.
Yeah.
It is on TV too, so if she's watching, she did hear that.
Yeah, so she, she lived in Auburn, so then we went for house shopping. It was Dudley or Charlton, and...
Get that a lot, these Auburn people just kind of pop up and next...
I can't afford the property. I can't afford the property tax.
Welcome aboard.
Mr. Johnson.
Was it the rousing speech for the Cub Scouts?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yes, I was on the fence, and then I applied that night, you know.
Some always comes back to scouts, and all...
Yeah, my boy's a scout, he's happy. It's one of his favorite things.
I want to thank you again for stepping forward and volunteering. Someone would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Clark?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landry, second by Ms. Sigunovich. Any other questions or concerns, anybody from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So to the Assistant Town Administrator, how many seats do you know are fin, does that leave us on FAA?
Mr. Chairman, I believe this would be seat number five that has been filled on FAA, which would leave us with four vacancies.
Probably all selectman appointments or some moderator mixed in there?
That I would have to double check, I believe the majority are selectman appointments.
Okay, so anybody out there paying attention that wants to get involved, like Mr. Clark and others? There are plenty of room under the tent. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next up, we have citizens' comments. Anybody wishing to be heard on something that is not on the agenda, that does not require a vote of the board tonight? Seeing none. Next up, we have a public hearing. It's the tax, annual tax classification hearing hosted by the Board of Selectmen, but Lisa Berg, Principal Assessor, will be conducting it. At this time, the public hearing is declared open at 6:35.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I think we only have one new board member. Jenna, have you ever seen this?
I haven't.
Okay, no, that's okay. If you have any questions, ask away.
Will do.
So the purpose of this tax hearing is for the Board of Selectmen to vote to determine if the town of Dudley should keep a single tax rate or change to a split tax rate. The vote for a single tax rate would mean there's only one tax rate for all classes of properties. The vote for the split tax rate would shift the burden of the residential tax rate onto the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So this pie chart that I show you every year hasn't changed much. As you can see, 93.5% makes up the residential class here in town. There's only 2.3% commercial and 1.8% industrial and 2.4% personal property classes. So here's several years of historical class percentages. You can see in residential, it didn't switch much. I mean, if you look at 23, it was 93.2%, bumped up to 93.6%, down to 93.5%. The commercial, industrial, and personal properties don't change much as well. We're pretty steady. So right now, these are our top 10 taxpayers that are assessed for $2 million up to $10 million. The ones in red are our personal property accounts, National Grid. Obviously, very big businesses, big dollar amounts. There's some industrial and commercial in there, and even some residential. But the biggest ones are like National Grid. These are all our taxpayers that are $1 million or, well, in the million-dollar area. The ones in red are personal property. SLR, I believe, is the personal property. That's some Walgreens. Again, National Grid, you've got Verizon, New England, that's up there. Terraform Arcadia, that's another personal property one. The rest are our town's residential and commercial properties. You can see, I'm sure you recognize some of the names up there. Looks like we have Yummies up there. We have the, what's the name of the place? Conch Sav, I'm going blank. That sells the marijuana.
Greatest Hits?
Greatest Hits, that's that, Verde. Organica LLC, Sagma, for example, that is Walgreens. So...
Who's Terraform Phoenix, please?
It's personal property. I don't know off the top of my head. I just know it's a... Is it Solar?
I think so.
I think you're right. Yeah, I think you're right. Yes, that just changed. It had a different name, that's why I don't recognize it. That's one of our pilot solar programs. So here's a list of the new average assessed values for fiscal 2025. Single-family homes have gone up to 417, I believe. They were at 363 or 9, 393 last year. Condos have gone up considerably. You all know that we have that new over 55 condo complex that bumped those up. Two families were at 315, three families at 364, commercial 382, and industrial 555. They have all gone up due to market and cost. So then every year, I show you a scenario if we shift the tax rate from residential to commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So currently, we're looking at a proposed tax rate of $10.17, with the average single-family home being $417,360, which would be an average, single family tax bill of $4,245. Commercial, industrial, and personal property classes have an average of $531,993. Times the proposed tax rate of 1017 would be an average tax bill of $5,410 a year. So I just gave you up there six different scenarios of shifting the rate 5% off of residential onto the CIP categories. So if you look in scenario one, shifting it 5%, the single-family tax bill would decrease by $17, but the CIPs would increase by 272. So there's a considerable difference there. So if you follow that all the way down in the right-hand column, you'll see that if we go even 30%, the residential properties will have a tax bill that's $88 less, but the CIP properties will get hit with a $1,623 increase in their taxes. This is just history of my assessed values by class over the years. They grow up, you know, gradually. There's nothing drastic in there. So my general statistics, so the assessment date for fiscal 2025 is January 1st of 2024, June 30th for new construction. The Department of Revenue approved my values for fiscal 2025 on November 7th. There are 351 towns in Massachusetts. Only 125 of those towns have a split tax rate. Dudley is the 47th lowest tax rate in Massachusetts amongst the towns that don't have a split tax rate. And we went from 47th, from 57th last year to 47th this year. The overall increases per classes, single families increased on an average of 7%. Condominiums increased about 30%. Again, that's due to that over 55 on Airport Road. Multifamilies increased by 9%. And commercial industrial properties as a whole increased at 7, by 7%. There was $23,229,501 in new growth value this year, which generated an additional revenue of $243,445. That's the most in my 20-plus years here that I've ever gotten. There were a lot of properties that were under construction. They were only a certain percentage done, plus all the Airport Road condos went in. So we were able to collect a lot of new growth for this year. And then below that, you see the five-year history of Dudley's tax rate. Doesn't move too, too much. We're proposing a $10.17 tax rate, but that's not etched in stone because we're not done with the recap sheet yet. So here is the favorite page for you guys. This is a comparison of our surrounding towns and their statistics. So right now, if I take all the cities and towns that have single and split tax rates, we're in the 79th rank. If you look at Charlton and all the other ones, look at their ranks. They're, they're way up there, they're not even close to us. If you compare their tax rates, our proposed 1017, and you look down, you can see how high the other towns' tax rates are. And again, that goes over, fills into the average single-family tax bill. We're still low compared to everyone around. And then I, I did a comparison of our residential percentage and the CIP percentage. Look at Charlton, Charlton has 25.5% CIP, and they still have a single tax rate. We only have 6.5%. And Webster, they just switched back last year or the year before from a split tax rate to a single tax rate, and they had a split tax rate with 14.4% commercial, industrial, personal property. I don't know the effect on Oxford yet. I know Oxford just switched over this year to a split tax rate. It was not the recommendation of the Board of Assessors, but the Selectmen decided they wanted to do that. So in conclusion, on behalf of the Board of Assessors, we'd like the Board of Selectmen to vote on a single tax rate as we have historically done in the past.
Lisa, was that a, I know we talked about this previously, was that a unanimous recommendation of your board?
Yes.
Thank you. And I just want to emphasize some of the numbers that you just discussed. The 1017 proposed new tax rate will put us back at the level we paid in 2023. Quite, but obviously, it's going to go up a little bit because the values are up, the bills are going up because values are going up.
The assessed values went up, so the tax rate needs to come down. We don't have any debt exclusions or 2.5 overrides new for this year.
Nothing's maturing off either, or?
Anything maturing, Rich? This is for 2025, no. So, so I do see it coming down. So we're at 1048 right now for fiscal 2024. This number is close. Like I said, until we get approval, and we have some numbers we need to adjust in the recap sheet.
We're generally pretty, pretty close. You're off maybe a penny one way, a couple pennies one way or another, but we're usually right there.
Last, last year, I, last year, I think I was off eight cents.
We had the three...
Usually, I'm right on the money. I try to be right on the money.
Well, we had three out of five overrides pass.
Yeah, yeah.
Then the state came in at the end too and did a little tweak, right?
Right. Yeah, we submit everything, and, and the deal always comes back with something that we can tweak or adjust, or might be in a wrong spot, and then we fix it. And that, sometimes that'll affect the tax rate, the proposed tax rate. Sometimes it doesn't.
Any questions for Mrs. Berg?
Mr. Johnson. So just to, like, word it away, I'm, I word it away I can understand if I could say that. So we've lost about 1% of our commercial over the last 10 years. Went from like 93 to 92.
I think I have that on.
Oh, I'm sorry, from, yeah.
Some of that would be like mace chemical, right?
Yeah.
So it went from 92, 2017, 92.3, and here we are, a whole bunch of years later, going in 93.5. Barely a percentage change.
And commercial, industrial, and personal property started at 1.6, and we're only at 2.4.
Yeah, so does it make sense to save four bucks a month for a residential property to drive more business out of town?
And if I go back to the slide that, oops, the slide that I had that showed the top taxpayers? Like I said, the National Grid's in there, but if you look, we have Shields Packaging, Hanky SASS, those, and Gentex, and Hamel. Those are all the largest businesses we physically have here in town. The employee people from town, you know, it's not like mass electric, it's in everybody's houses and things like...
Yeah, national conglomerate.
Right, so they're the ones that would get hit. And, and you can see, there's not that many of them. The majority of them are, that are in commercial and industrial and personal property, are smaller businesses here in town. You know, your pizza places, your hair salons.
We do this every year, and it's just, the pie chart says it all, 93.5% residential. It's a very sobering, sobering percentage. Just like, you know, someone who had children and went to public schools, as a lot of us have, one, one tax bill does not educate one child. And if you have two, three, crazy. Any other questions for Mrs. Berg? Anybody from the audience? Ready for this, Mr. Clark? Ready for these numbers?
I will be posting this. I didn't have time today because I just finished this. I'll be posting this on the website and also be posting the new assessed values on the website as well tomorrow. So if anybody wants to view what their new assessment is, it'll be up tomorrow.
Mr. Root, anything you want to add?
Unless Lisa wants to kind of give a one or two-minute overview of the, of the two and a half, proposition two and a half corresponds between the property values versus the tax rate. In other words, you have to stay within a two and a half percent capacity.
Right, so every, every year, we can only generate 2.5% more in revenues than we did the prior year. So if all our values are going up, which they are, I, I'm still chasing, I'm still chasing numbers. There's still, the houses are still selling for $80,000 to $100,000 more than I have them assessed for, so I have to keep increasing the values. With that being said, I can't have a high tax rate because if I do, we'll go over our proposition two and a half.
So if we had a huge property value and a low tax rate, that would seem to make sense. But the telling thing, Mr. Chairman, is that we have the lowest tax rate, I think probably now in Wester County again. And in the area, we have the lowest average value. So those two, those two data points, you know, kind of, kind of illustrate what a value the town of Dudley is for people.
Right, in the, in the bottom line, Lisa plugs all the numbers in, and DOI does their, their due diligence. We still end up with the smallest average single-family tax bill also. That's a net result of...
Correct.
Multiply it up by 93.5% total taxable passes, or taxable bills.
If, if people call up and, and they're complaining about their assessed value, I, I can usually pinpoint or find comps of sales that sold, you know, proving my value. And what people don't understand is I don't just slap a value on, onto a house. I have to supply a lot of statistical reports to the Department of Revenue. It's just so involved, and they go through it with a fine-tooth comb. And if I have one little thing wrong, I have to fix it. So we're not just pulling values out of the sky.
Crazy.
I tell people when they complain about their, say, their little split, I say, pick it up and put it in Webster, and tell me how much you're going to pay for taxes.
Put it in South for Disturbage. Put it anywhere. Any further questions? Again, audience, all set? It's time we close the public hearing at, it looks like 6:52-ish. You good with that?
6:52.
Six, 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 6:52, I mean, sorry, I've got eight minutes. Think later on the clock, I can't see. Public hearing closed. What is the board's pleasure to act on the recommendation of the Board of Assessors?
What's the proposed motion, Mr.?
To vote on a residential factor of one and continue with historical single tax rate?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, segment Sigunovich. Any further questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, board, Lisa.
Okay, did, did you all sign?
It's working its way.
Just needs to go back.
We're a little proactive. Next up is six, public business. At the request of the Recreation Commission, the Board of Selectmen to vote to approve the town of Dudley Christmas tree lighting, 12/5/24. Take any action relative thereto. What is the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Mr. Sigunovich.
Second.
Mr. Johnson, anybody here from Rec Committee that'd like to speak on it a little bit, or?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Landry.
The Recreation Commission is looking for permission to use the town hall for the tree lighting on 12/5/24 at 6:00 p.m. Santa will arrive on the fire truck for the tree lighting, and there will be time for the children to visit with Santa. And the library is going to have cookie decorating, and there will be pizza and snacks as well.
So what are we looking for, for like the public to be here? Six-ish, we think, roughly? Half hour early, is that what they want, or?
If it's at six, probably 5:30.
5:30, I think it's, okay. Like the public, probably 5:30. Be more information on the, the website. It's already up on the, the flashing sign out front. Any questions or concerns from public safety concerning that? You guys have done it before, you know what to do?
Yeah, we've got meetings on it.
There was a motion and a second. Call to a vote, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, and please come people, it's one of the truly great events that the town puts on. Every year, it gets a little bit bigger and bigger and bigger. Next up, board to discuss prorating recycle center pricing and take any action relative thereto. This was put on at a request from Aura Finn to Mr. Ruder, who brought it to my attention. I asked him to put it on. I'm going to have Mr. Ruder speak first, then Mr. Gadske can come up and confirm this up. Do you want to go right to MJ?
So MJ is on his way up now, I see. So MJ is on his way up now, is he? This came to Aura. She's had multiple inquiries about, and I think we've probably had a few at our window as well, about prorating permits. Instead of buying an annual permit, you'd buy a permit six months at a time. So you'd have one, you know, either an annual permit or you could buy it potentially January 1st. There's also been some discussion about prorating it by month, but I, I think that would probably end up being an accounting nightmare and I, I would, my suggestion would be if this is what the Board decides to investigate further, you should probably just look at one year or a six-month period, maybe January 1st till June 30th.
Right, I know we, we discussed it a little bit, and Mr. Gatski came in after. It wouldn't be, if you buy a sticker July 1st, you're not going to stop in January and get a refund. It's either, it's either all year or January.
It's all year, and then if you, if somebody new comes in who wants to buy a sticker, if they come in in November, it's still full price. January 1st, it would be a half price sticker. Grass and leaves would still be the same, $35 fee year round. No discount on that. It would just be the trash, a half price sticker from January 1st till June 30th.
Mr. Johnson?
So there's no opportunity for like gouging or saving up or something, right? Because you still have the per bags and?
Yeah, it'd still be the per bag, and you're not going to save your trash from, from July until January.
Not with the per bags, so.
Yeah, so it's still the same per bag amount. It would just be the half price and start in January 1st.
It doesn't affect the bulk disposal rate either, if you have mattresses or?
No, I mean. No, everything would still be the same.
Just that six.
Just your yearly price would be half the price. Sometimes we get new, new people in town, they want to buy a sticker, but they don't want to buy a sticker for full price in January.
Right, right, really makes sense. Any questions for Mr. Gatski or the town administrator?
Would you do something similar where, where you have like a day for people to get a sticker put on their car, or would this be done per?
I mean, if they do buy a sticker, we've been still selling them at the library. Because it would, would be shorthanded and everything, and then they can get the sticker and then the people down at the dump do still put their stickers on, on either a Wednesday or a Saturday, they'll put it on for you.
Seems like the library worked out pretty well this year, right?
Yeah, like I said, it was just, it was shorthanded, and then they had better hours for people. They can go down there, what was it, six days or seven days a week, get, get their sticker. After hours, it's just a lot easier.
No, I like it. That's, that's, I like that idea. And I, I think a lot of people pick up on that.
It's just a little easier with the sticker sales. We did the bulk at the Highway Department for like three or four weeks. We did the bulk amount of them. Then you still have people that are on vacations and stuff like that. If you try to sell the stickers down at the recycling center, it's just on a like a Saturday or something, it's just too congested. So you just, it's really hard to sell stickers down there on a, on a weekday or on a Wednesday night.
Agree with that. Any further questions? What's the board's pleasure? Well, mine's announced the rate too. What would the rate be? 190?
It would be, it would be 50% of.
Yeah, what's the full, what are the full stickers? Be 85?
It's different, you have a senior rate, yeah, there's several different. You have a veteran first responder rate, and then you have a reg, regular resident. So it'd be, we'd have to
Divide it.
Divide each one, and that would be to set rates.
Assuming this is going to pass, we can always post that on our social media and we'll get the firm numbers and.
Yeah, we'll get the firm numbers. We can make the slips on, we have some slips that we can make the half rate prices.
All right, so everyone understands it'd only be a half, six month discount, not a monthly, not a quarterly. What's the board's pleasure on a motion on that to add effect?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Just that, because I think we need to be very clear, because when this vote takes place, we'll be getting, get inundated. We're talking about one year, right? July 1st to June 30th, or January 1st to June 30th. No availability for July 1st to January 1st, right? It's one year, or at the midway point of January 1st, the second half.
Correct. That's what I said.
They all, they all expire?
Same time.
June 30th.
They all expire June 30th, and it's one year full, or a half year available for sale January 1st.
Okay.
Somebody want to try to craft that motion, or?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion
Mr. Landry.
to prorate recycling center pricing. Where you either have the full year as it stands now, July to June, or you go half a year from January to June at half the price.
Second.
What, um, sorry. I want to make sure it's right, though. Inclusive or not inclusive of yard clippings and that sort of thing.
But, yeah, I was just going to say that. It's going to ask the motion just to be expanded to include all of the fees.
Staying the same.
Yeah, stayed the same. No drop off and all that. Go with that?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yeah, I, that's good. That'll stick.
Probably not, but we'll try it.
That's my only thing. Do we want to wait till the next meeting to get a rock solid thing?
Why don't we put together a sheet?
Because this doesn't come up until January 1st. I'm not against it. I, I just want to measure twice.
Why don't we put, put it all together on a piece of paper and, and let everybody have a chance to look at it?
And post it.
And then put a final amendment to it. If there are no changes, we'll move forward. If there are changes, we'll bring it up again and make those amendments. We could vote it now, but we'll, we'll put it at the next meeting. I'll have something in front of you.
I want to stress, I'm not against it.
Yeah, no.
I'm for doing it correctly the first time and not have grief.
As am I. As am I.
Hey, why don't we just pull it then, and then we'll?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, and then we'll just come up with an actual sheet.
That's okay.
Handout. Maybe we can post it on social media in between so people know it's coming too. They won't just wait.
You'll do whatever you want, Mr. Chairman.
You, you guys do a great job. You guys do what you deem necessary, and Mr. Johnson will have his chart for us at the next meeting.
Okay. Just for that a second, or does it?
Make a motion, Mr. Johnson provides you that, I was kidding. All right, that's, that's what we'll do then. We're going to.
We'll put a flyer together for, for you to vote on, I know that's.
Now, if something comes up that we're not thinking of, you guys can probably hit it before we
Yeah.
have to change it. All right, good. Thank you, MJ, and thanks Aura for bringing that to our attention. This was tabled from the last meeting, I think, right? Knights of Columbus Council 228 toll booth request, September 27, 2025, with a rain date, October 4, 2025. Area 3 West Main, Mr. Camagnani presenting for the Knights of Columbus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we're, we're on. So my apologies for not being here at the last meeting. Do appreciate that this is getting on. This is the Knights of Columbus. Every year they do their, their Tootsie Roll Drive. It's a charity drive to help those less fortunate. National campaign, this is one of the, the weekends where it's done nationally. So this is sort of, it's a Dudley-Webster Council, and it's good to get it. Part of the discussion prior to this getting on the agenda was why so early? Again, this is, this is something national. We wanted to make sure that the Webster Council 228 has been, is doing it the same way as the rest of Massachusetts is, as well as the, the rest of the nation. We just had it. Ironically, we had a rain, a rain date three times the previous year. This year, we would have loved to have had rain, but for other reasons. So going forward, we'd like to have that, the, the weekend specified along with the, the rain date. However you'd like to view that. And it's a 100% give back. So whatever the council receives in donations, it's all remitted nationally and then redistributed, so.
That was, thank you for clarifying that, because that was the question at the last meeting.
Right.
It was kind of early. But we didn't mind blocking that date out. Now we know why.
And it, and it's greatly appreciated. You'll see a lot of familiar faces there. Again, it's a Webster-Dudley Council. So it's, it's, it's covering both sides. It's not like one group is, is trying to monopolize an area and.
Excellent. Plenty of time to get together with the public safety too.
Most definitely.
Any questions for Mr. Camagnani? What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the toll booth requests from the Knights of Columbus Council 228 for September 27, 2025, with a rain date of October 4, 2025, in the area of 3 West Main Street.
Second.
Motion made in second. Just want to add the time. What is it? What do we, nine to 12, is that what we do? Nine to 12.
Correct.
Excellent. Motion made in second. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Town administrators report. Mr. Ruda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, in my capacity as Chairman of the Executive Board for Regional Dispatch, I delivered remarks on behalf of the Board of Selectmen at the 10th anniversary event of the formation of the South Worcester County Regional Dispatch Center. It doesn't seem like 10 years at all, does it? The Regional Dispatch Center has been an example of a successful merger between our town and the town of Webster to share resources, which enables us to take advantage of grant funding opportunities and reduce the administrative costs of managing and administering public safety communications for our town. Representatives from the State 911 Department were on hand, along with State Rep Marcy and State Representative Joe McKenna, both of whom pointed to the center, including the 911 officials, as a model for regionalization for other communities to follow. So that's something that we can point to that's been successful and be proud of, and it's being looked at as a model for other towns to regionalize. Just as a reminder, the town is in its second year of an IME with Webster to share veteran services with Webster. Our community hosts that effort. To date, that model has proven to be a successful collaboration between the two towns, which, as the Board knows, has a long history of working collaboratively and has a team when it comes to providing local veterans with respect and honor that they have earned. And we recently had an event for Veterans Day, and it's always, like usual, a very good showing, very respectful. Mr. Sullivan was there, and I was honored to be asked to attend that as well. And at the 10th anniversary of Dispatch Center last week, I had the opportunity to check in with Webster's TA relative to the ongoing discussions that we have been having regarding regionalizing and animal control, I'm sorry, and animal inspector. You recall, we've been for the last six months or so, looking to find a good solution for our requirement to have an animal inspector. And I think probably by the next meeting, we should have some sort of draft agreement in place for the Board to take a look at. And of course, as soon as I have that drafted, we'll send it out, and hopefully we'll be on the right track to form another successful partnership with Webster. And then finally, we have drafted a list of meeting dates for the Board of Selectmen for the next six months, and I'm just going to pass them out now. We can probably put them on the next agenda. Just, I just want to give everybody an advanced copy of it. Because we generally have to set the dates November, December for the next six months. And that's really all I have, Mr. Chairman, for tonight.
Questions for the town administrator? Welcome. I was unable to attend last Friday, but I echo what Mr. Ruda said. I had it secondhand. I heard it was well attended. It was a nice recognition for Director Linsky and his staff and all the two over there.
Yeah, it's hard to have events during the, during the week when the Board works, and everyone understands that. So I'm happy to go on your behalf and make sure they're aware that we are tuned into it.
Excellent. Motion to accept the town administrator's report.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Landry, Mr. Johnson. Any further questions, comments, or concern? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Departmental Communications Assistant Town Administrator, Human Resources.
Nothing this week, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Mr. Camagnani, if you have anything you'd like to bring up?
I got it, I got it. Thank you.
Try to be as quick as we can. Take the cue from your assistant town administrator. Everybody knows that your Medicare rates are July 1 renewal, which means the December 1 payment is, is what's being changed. If you are a retiree, watch TV, but don't pay attention to any of those ads. The town of Dudley's retirees receive a Medicare plan, so you don't need to take any other action because you're over 65 and already enrolled. I still get those questions. It's not a problem. Also, I know the Worcester Regional Retirement System has their, their pension survivor information. The blue, the blue sheets are coming out. We want to make sure those get notarized so that we're not sending a pension check to a decedent. Water sewer bills have come out. The only reason I make mention of it is that when the actual tax bills are generated, unpaid FY '24 water sewer amounts remaining unpaid when those bills are generated, real estate bills that is, it will be leaned to the third quarter. So anybody who's in arrears, now is the time to take care of it. Always presents an issue moving forward because it then becomes part of the third, the third quarter taxes. And then we start to get delinquencies and what have you. Try to be reasonable on it, so anything that was billed up until 6:30, 24 is, is liable to go on. Obviously, if there's a current bankruptcy, it doesn't. Anything that wasn't paid in July, August, or September is a moot point. We have to wait until the other, the other cycle comes back around. So it's only the previous fiscal year. Want to thank Lisa Berg. She was in a couple of times to my office talking about the tax rate, split tax rate and valuation. I think a, a very valuable point was brought up. It's our ability to levy taxes against the values which controls really the tax rate. So high valuations and the same amount being levied each year means that we have a lower tax rate. But I do agree, if you move that raised ranch to a neighboring town, it's likely going to be more expensive. So one final thing that I'd like to, to build on that Lisa had made mention of, but I don't think she emphasized it very well. All of your new growth in this year becomes part of your levy for the next year. So that smaller or mid-sized project that happened last year is part of the 2.5% this year. So the successes that we have last year, this year moving forward, the cyclical inspections, the, the sale inspections that she used to do with retired Fire Captain Knechny, or Deputy Chief Knechny, all of those pennies are making dollars in the second and the third year. So when they do the inspections, that's, she's an integral part of getting monies, moving that levy up. And I can go into a deeper level of detail, but other than that, appreciate, appreciate the time previously on behalf of the Knights of Columbus as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Town accountant. Mr. Gatski. Chief. Kocianowski. Well, I'm going left or right, so. No, I meant Merrick, sorry.
Good evening. Just a reminder, we're doing Toys for Tots with the Worcester Marine Corps League again. We have two drop boxes in the lobby at the fire station, so if people want to donate, we'd be more than happy to take the donations. The Marines will probably come, I think it's the first or second week in December to pick the toys up. Also, just a reminder, please do not burn. Don't burn anything. No ornamental fires, no fire pits, no anything. Most of the people are still listening, but some aren't. Over the weekend, we had to go out. One resident had a fire pit and it got away from him and burned about a 50 by 50 area in the woods behind their house. It's extremely dry. We're supposed to get about an inch of rain on Thursday, but we're going to need more than one rainstorm to take care of the problem. That'll help for a few days, but just some numbers that we get from the fire marshal in October and through yesterday. There's already been 1,606 acres burned. there's already been one thousand six hundred and six acres burned statewide, and there's been six hundred and four fires. So people really need to be careful. Please don't contribute to the problem. Just don't burn right now. And thank you to the citizens that have made phone calls for us to go check on smoke in the area and things like that. That's important because we can get there sooner rather than later. Once the fire spreads, it takes a lot of manpower and a lot of overtime to put these fires out. So that should be concerning to people, too. Thanks.
You know, Chief, to follow up on that, I had a family member this week in Connecticut, at a small town, all volunteer. They had a pre-Thanksgiving celebration, a hundred percent volunteer department, one acre brush fire popped up, took three hours for neighboring towns to come in and help them. It's, it's just bad out there. Can't be emphasized enough. Please don't burn.
I mean, with, some of the fires, we've been going to have taken days and weeks to put out. We just, they just dispatched another task force to Winchton for tomorrow, so.
Crazy. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Chief Collins.
Just real quick, with the holidays coming up, we got, we're doing a toy drive also. We're asking any resident, if they want to drop off any new toys downstairs in the lobby. We'll be collecting toys till around December eighteenth, and then we'll pass them out to local residents that need a little extra help this year. If you do need a little extra help this year, just reach out to Sergeant Remillard. There's more information on our Facebook page, how to get a hold of him. Also, the Santa tour is coming up on the thirtieth. It starts at noon. I think the town's going to be posting a little bit more information as far as the road list and all that stuff, and look forward to that. And other than that, I don't think there's another meeting, so have a nice Thanksgiving.
Chief, another thing, too. Pine Street, nice job. The guys went out. That unregistered vehicle was gone the next day. Line of cars were gone. I went by today. There was one lady walked in on a beautiful day. There was one car left, and she said to say, "Thank you," and she pointed, she said, "One left," so.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate the guys going out.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief. Any questions for the chief? Hearing none. I think that just about sums up our entertainment for tonight. Need to go into executive session. Motion to move into executive session under General Law Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Eagle Drive, and to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations, United Steelworkers, not to reconvene an open session unless necessary for a vote. And I so move as chair.
Second.
Second, Sigunovich. Roll call, vote. Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Janet Deschaine, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Have a safe, happy, healthy holiday. We are.